Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. If we could all remain standing just for a minute. We lost one of our business members in our community who was here over 20 some years, Bob Coster, Coster, Gibraltar Trade Center. He passed away November 14th and we'd like to have a, just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
Mincer.
Here.
I need a motion to excuse Commissioner Fournier.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Bunton. Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mincer?
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications of reports. This evening, we have a presentation of the Mount Clemens Beautification Legendary Bones of Mount Clemens Award. Please step forward. Come all the way up, right to the mic.
Well, we are the...
You have to speak into the mic. Bring it down.
Right here, area. Okay. Some of the beautification committee is here today and we're here to, for a couple of reasons. We did the Mount Clemens Legendary Bones Bicentennial and I don't know if you all know about it, but it turned out fabulous. And we're here to pass out prizes and also say thank you very much for getting us started with $500 from the Downtown Development Association. So we'd like to say thank you to them. And I think Mickey is here, so thank you Mickey, very much. And for also doing for a second and third prize, that was fabulous. So, but don't worry, I'm not going to talk long at all. During the Legendary Bones Bicentennial, which started October 19th through November 2nd, residents and visitors could go and they could vote for their favorite displays, in which that's what they did. So I thought I would mention the participants of this. So let's, it's only going to take a minute, but okay, we have Honeyboy Willard from the Purple Gang. He was here with, at Three Blind Mice and the former Mount Clemens Fire Chief Edward Sawitzky. He was over at the fire station. Famous Mae West was at Max &amp; Ollie's. Mae McKenna was located between The Nest and Mae's Restaurant. And we also saw Babe Ruth and Jack Dempsey. Hopefully, some of you guys got over to see them. And the Jaguar, they were presented by O'Halloran's Public House and Orleans and City Sneakers. W.C. Fields was seen over at Artist Music. And Helena Rubenstein.
At Gumbos.
Which we all love. And Christian Clemmons, he's obviously the town, we know who that guy is. He's our namesake. He was over at Gus's, Coney Island. And Catherine Dickinson Crocker, the first First Lady. And the second, and that's another story. She was over at City Hall. Dor Kellogg was sitting in a bathtub over at Crocker House, which she looked really fabulous. Legendary Clark Gable was at Bebo's. Izzy Bernstein was a Purple Gang member and he was over at Paperback Writer and Weirdsville Records. And last but not least, William Burton Hubbard was one of the first funeral directors in Mount Clemens and appropriately located at Alley Cats, Laid to Rest and Alley Cats Junk Teaks. I mispronounced so bad, I'm sorry. Okay, and that's a great little store, by the way. We are also grateful for everyone that participated in it and we hope to do it again next year. We don't, we'll come up with something. It won't be Hamilton, that would be too controversial, never mind. No, never mind, not that. Okay, so, the first prize goes to...
Alley Cat?
Laid to Rest. And thank you so much. You guys did an awful, wonderful, fabulous job. They had a horse that was in the parade, but he broke his leg.
Was there a horse in there?
No. We had to shoot him, he broke his leg.
Doja, didn't I tell you?
He didn't make it, seriously. But okay, second prize, second prize goes to Gumbos.
Over here?
Yes. They did Helen Rubenstein and she was also fabulous. And third prize goes, goes to the Honey, what's his name? From the Purple Gang, Honeyboy.
Honeyboy.
Honeyboy, Willard, yeah. And they weren't able to make it, so we're going to drop it off for them. But thank you all and we hope to do this again next year. You guys were absolutely fabulous, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other announcements?
I do not.
You do not? Adoption of the agenda? You need a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mincer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, this is public participation time. Excuse me. All I ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and you adhere to our three-minute rule. The mic is open. Mike Knight.
Hello, I'm Jack Johns, I live at 35 Riverside Drive. I just want to say congratulations, there's been a number of really good events in town. We did the Christmas tree lighting, just amazing crowds that night on Friday. We had a great time, a lot of good food in town now. We also had the Christmas parade, which had good crowds. I had a wonderful time with my wife there. There's a lot of things going on that are really good and positive in Mount Clemens. I just want to mention a few of those. Mae's came to town, Mae's Cafe is just a wonderful cafe to eat. Used to be the old Jailhouse Cafe. Also, new, brand-new, high-end salon is coming into town, which is open now. And also, The Nest, which is a women-owned, small-business incubator space. And that is really a nice thing that most towns do not have, allow women to come in, grow their small business, and after they grow to a certain size, can go out and then utilize some of the space in the open areas in Mount Clemens. Also, housing's being built, some homes being built on Crocker. There's three brand-new homes being built. Also, there was a beautiful home that was built on the other, on the north side of Crocker, just a wonderful new place. And that individual person's looking at Mount Clemens to do more investment is just really nice to see. Also, we've been on IHG TV, on national TV. We had some spots, I believe Chevy did a commercial about Mount Clemens recently. And also, some, you know, a lot of people just commenting about the changes downtown. The one thing I did want to mention was just trying to look at 67 Cats, which is the old McComb Bailey Building. I don't, I'm not promoting it to be some type of special use. All I'm trying to do is trying to see if someone will take a look at that and maybe encourage them or enforce them to maybe clean up that property, put some windows in, or at least board the open windows in that, that open space. And we had someone unfortunately break in a few years back and they were walking on the very top sill of the building. And it was a little scary at that time, so I know, you know, the city has a lot of things good going on, so I think maybe this is time to be, put some pressure on enforcing some of the blight on that building and either put new windows in or boards. But there's so much going on that I think it's a good time to try to have some of the business owners clean up their property a little nicer, because there's a lot of people looking to buy now downtown. And I think a lot of young millennials are also looking to move to downtown. So I think it's a perfect time for maybe enforcing the blight on that particular building. Thank you.
Thank you. And may I add, the old big boy just sold today. It's closed. Where'd they go? So that'll be cleaned up. Anybody else? Oh, alrighty. There were no administrative responses. I need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes from November 5th, 2018.
Support.
Okay, on to general business. 9A, approval of the 41B... Oh, roll call, oh yes, please. Approval of the minutes, roll call.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mincer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
General business. 9A, approval of the 41B District Court 2019 budget. And I think we have everyone here, we have, are you?
Yeah.
Judge Fuqua?
I'm up.
Okay, you're up.
I think so. So, Carrie Fuqua, I'm the current chief judge of the 41B District Court. And I'm here today to ask the board to approve the budget as proposed. And I'm sure the mayor has informed all of you that the council's already met and agreed to recommend that the budget be adopted.
Everybody has their copy, right? We needed to make the motion. I know, I'm just... Go ahead. Need a motion? Somebody wants to make a motion? Before we go any further?
Motion to approve the 41B District Court 2019 budget.
Support.
Now, now, I can do your speech again, I kind of went backwards.
Sorry.
Why don't you give me a second?
I don't need to reintroduce myself again. But as I previously just indicated, we're, the management council met a few weeks ago. We went over the budget in much more detail and all the people that sit on that management council have voted unanimously to adopt our budget at the 41B District Court as proposed. So I'm simply asking that the board adopt that recommendation.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Mincer?
I just wondered, in the narrative we have, it's as that methods are being used to increase the payments of old receivables. I just wondered what those methods were.
Well, I'm assuming, I'm thinking that the amnesty, we did a ticket amnesty program. We ran that for the, basically the entire month of October. That was to try to clear up some super-old warrants and to try to bring in some additional monies to try to cover the lost revenue. Do anything? Oh yeah, we do the tax garnishments too, every year, to try to get the outstanding fines and costs that are owed to the court. And actually, our, it's, we garnish quite a bit. We've got one of the best...
We've been doing that for a long time.
Yeah, we've got one of the best in the state in terms of garnishing money to cover those outstanding fines and costs.
And I have one other question. So, the decrease in the drug court grants of 132,000 approximately leads to an increase in using the contingency fund and making other cuts in maintenance, capital outlay, and professional fees, and that's how it's balancing?
I don't, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The drug court grant was a four-year grant that just expired, so that one's gone now. And so, that's the reason for the decrease in the revenue. And then it gives us additional contingency.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just like to say congratulations, you're doing an excellent job.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. I will, I do want to add one quick thing. The Supreme Court heard arguments today, and I think our funding unit should be aware of it, the Supreme Court heard arguments today with respect to the courts, whether or not it's constitutional for the courts to collect money. So keep your ear to the ground, we're certainly keeping our ears to the ground. There was a case that came out last year, there was a legislative fix, and there was a case that was heard today with respect to whether or not it's, the legislative fix is constitutional. And this is an argument that's gone back years and years and years about whether or not the courts should be...
The issue is the court imposing, district courts imposing costs. And they do so by a formula that includes overhead and various things. And so, the challenge is that that's a tax. Now, the municipal league and the district courts, their response is it's a user fee and not a tax. So that's what the dispute is.
Correct, and that was heard today, so we're going to wait and see where that all plays out.
Where else do we collect it? The municipalities for...
That's where the question lies, I believe. Yeah, that's the million-dollar question, who's going to collect the money? So I think that the, you know, the District Court Judges Association is wanting it to be studied and reviewed as to what the best method would be, so that... So we'll see. It works for us right now, but we'll see. I mean, there's a lot of argument out there that it causes the judges to be, it could cause bias on behalf of the judges when ultimately we're collecting money from people who are found guilty. I understand the argument, so that's where we're at with that. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware that is happening right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I have a roll call?
Ford?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mincer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, 9B. Second public hearing on special assessments for downtown maintenance programs.
Move to open the second public hearing for the downtown maintenance program?
Support.
This date has been set as the second public hearing for the downtown maintenance program. The purpose of the second public hearing is to review and confirm the special assessment role as prepared by the city assessor.
This is a public hearing?
That was opening.
This is a public hearing. You may come to the mic and if you have anything to say, any comments? Okay, seeing none, closing public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing on special assessments for downtown maintenance program.
Support.
Is there any comments from the board? Okay, roll call.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mincer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
9C, approve purchases and payments of invoices?
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mincer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Who'd approve?
There isn't one.
There isn't one.
Tricking us.
City managers report.
A reminder that city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 22nd and Friday, November 23rd for the Thanksgiving holiday. Thursday's refuse pickup will be delayed until Friday and Friday's refuse pickup will be delayed until Saturday. Please consider shopping and supporting the downtown businesses on Saturday, November 24th, 2018, for Small Business Saturday, as well as throughout the holiday season. The Downtown Development Authority has begun its Free After 3 parking program that will allow visitors to park at no cost after 3:00 PM during the week. Parking is always free on Saturdays and Sundays. The tinsel tour kickoff will be held on Saturday, December 1st, from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM at City Hall. Stroll along the riverfront to see the spectacular array of decorated Christmas trees. Visit with Santa and enjoy a cup of hot chocolate to kick off Mount Clemens' first annual tinsel tour. Trees will be display, on display from December 1st through January 1st. The 13th Annual Christmas Walk is scheduled to take place on Thursday, December 6th, starting at 5:30 PM. Tickets are available at the Mount Clemens Public Library. For more information, contact 586-783-5898 or 586-463-2752. And the Curbside Compost Pickup Season is scheduled to end on Friday, December 7th, 2018. And also, nominations are now being accepted for the Local Treasurer Award. Nomination forms are available at City Hall, in the City Manager's Office, and on the city's website at www.cityofmountclemens.com. The deadline to submit nominations is Monday, December 17th, 2018.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? Okay, city commissioners. Commissioner Mincer?
I just wanted to remind people that the Utilities Department will be flushing the hydrants. You may see, and this is a routine maintenance thing, you will, you may see some discolored water, so just run your cold water and, you know, everything will be fine. Run your cold water at the faucet furthest away from the water meter until it looks clear. But this is a routine process. Little Free Library, we added another Little Free Library. I filled it up tonight at Belmoral and Esplanade in the Pocket Park there. And we have one more to go. The post is in at Shady Side. I don't believe the box is up yet, but it will be shortly. And that will make nine Little Free Libraries throughout the city. So read a book, take a book, and leave a book at any one of them. So I marched in the parade, I learned a couple things. I did march with the Optimists Club. I learned that if you're going to park in staging area three down by Vicks, that you should either have a ride or another method back when you end up all the way down by Three Blind Mice. Because I walked all the way down, you know, the parade route and then all the way back. But it was a lot of fun. The interesting thing about marching in the parade is you don't get to see all of the parade. And so, I saw a lot of pictures after the fact and I thought, this was really great. There was some really, you know, really neat stuff going on. And as I passed out over 600 candy canes down the sidelines, the commentary from the public and the squeals from the little kids, it was, it was just really enjoyable and it really, you know, it was a great day. And I was really excited to see so many people that I knew on the sidelines. So it was a wonderful event, as Jack Johns has said. And the tree lighting on Friday. I was standing there in front of Max &amp; Ollie's and, you know, was listening to the crowd and the positive comments were very much appreciated. The excitement of the children when they saw the horses at the end of the road as, you know, in preparation for Santa to come through. It was really good. And it bodes well that the residents were so happy and excited and pleased. And again, at that event, although I did not win the Goodfellas $10,000, there were a lot of people there in the crowd that, you know, residents that I knew, businesspeople. It was just a really enjoyable and well-done event, both of them. And so, I give the mayor credit for the parade, it was awesome. And I give, I think, the mayor and the DDA credit for the downtown Friday thing. Well, or I give the credit to the committee, it was great. It was really well-done. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
I too would like to thank the mayor and all her volunteers for a very nice parade. I even seen some city workers out there. Very nice parade. I'd like to see you do it next year, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Button?
I think I'll piggyback on what Mr. Ford said. I'd like to see you all doing it again next year. It was just marvelous. And it seems like it gets better each year. And I don't know if that's just the experience showing through or the fact that we just get better as we go. So I congratulate you and just keep it going. I also like to say thanks to all those who voted in the midterm election. If you didn't get the candidate that you wanted, then don't stop voting. And if you got the candidate that you wanted, don't stop voting. We need the public to stand up and represent themselves so that the people who are running for office know what you want as opposed to what they want. I'd like to thank Erica Peoples for participating in our parade. She's a movie star, she a DJ, she does a lot of things in the entertainment business. But the best thing I like to say about it is she comes back and gives back to Mount Clemens. And so, with that, we congratulate her and wish her complete success in the remaining of her career. Usually, I entertain you with bizarre and unique holiday for the month of November. But I would just like to bring up the fact that, of course, Thursday is Thanksgiving. It's the fourth Thursday of the month of November. And Thanksgiving is not a bizarre, unique, or wacky day of celebration for the month of November, but a serious day to be thankful for all the blessings that you enjoy. Thanksgiving is a time to spend special moments with your loved ones, to hold hands and cherish the moment, because they or you may not be around forever. Thanksgiving also is a day to say kind words to someone who looks up to you in awe, because that little person soon will grow up and leave your side. Thanksgiving is a time to give a warm hug to a special person in your life, because that is the only treasure you can give with your heart and it doesn't cost a cent. Thanksgiving is a time to love and to share the precious thoughts in your mind. Thanksgiving is a time that we often overeat without consideration of the blessings that we enjoy. I think that was really me. Thanksgiving is a time to thank God, karma, the universe, or whatever supreme being that you believe in for the blessings that you have enjoyed in your life. If you have mobility, the use of your limbs, the use of your mind, food, shelter, you have much to be thankful for. So, to everyone, I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. And for Commissioner Wisdom for the night. What you do makes a difference. And you have to decide what kind of difference you want to make. And that's by Jane Goodall. With that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Commissioner Crapp?
I wanted to thank all of the businesses and the organizations that participated in the Legendary Bones Contest of Mount Clemens. I think especially it being the first year of the contest, it turned out great and it added a fun element to, you know, October and November. And I think those types of events are really helping to make Mount Clemens unique and, you know, the downtown special. Thanks to the DDA for the tree lighting ceremony, that was great on Friday. And thank you to the mayor and the parade committee for Saturday, also a fun event. I'd like to thank everyone who came to my coffee talks in November, made a good turnout. And then December 11th at 9:30 AM at John's Family Grill. And December 13th at 7:00 PM, John's Family Grill will be this month's coffee talk. And then, of course, I'd like to also echo the happy Thanksgiving to everyone. It's a great time to reflect and look...
It's a great time to reflect and look at all of the blessings that are in your life, and also to try to extend that to someone else's life. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Two quick thank-yous to all the residents who have been, I've seen raking the leaves that are in the streets so they're not clogging up the drains, in case we get an early snow pollock we've already had. And secondly, to the mayor and the Parade Committee for the great parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I want to take this moment to also thank the Parade Committee. They're just a great, great group of people that have been with me for 14 years, putting on this parade. We start in June, which a lot of people go, June, you know, but we start in June, and what you saw Saturday is all the hard work that they put in to make this happen. And I want to thank Erica Peoples. She was so gracious to accept this. She enjoyed herself tremendously. She was here today, and we're looking at some different things to do down the road with Erica. Great person. And she's filming in Flint. She says she's filming in Flint, Flint, the next couple of weeks, so she's just a really wonderful person. I want to thank the people who participated in the parade. Sonny, who drove a car, who can barely fit into a Ford Mustang or a Chevy Camaro, whichever one you drove. Roger, same thing. He could, you know, you see them in there, it's like a little toy car or something. Ron carried our flag, which, there was quite a few this year, more than we've had before in the past. And it's a parade of flags, for those of you who don't attend. We decided to do that a few years ago to try to get the rest of the 26 communities in Macomb County to show their pride and walk in the parade with their flag. This year, we also had the Mount Clemens float, and it was just fantastic. I mean, if you, we'll get some pictures up, because I think the employees deserve a great big hand. They spent hours on weekends and during the evening on their own time putting this float together, and it was, was just great. So, thank you so much, and I hope you keep it together for other parades that'll be coming up throughout Macomb County. This is kind of, almost like a climax to our 2,000, I mean, 200-year celebration, although we do have tinsel tour, which will be kind of pulling it all together to say goodbye to our bicentennial year. But, you know, Ruthie, we missed you. We really missed you. We had a nice car for you, too. You know?
Thanks.
That's all right. We love you. Anyway, I just want to thank everybody. Just a great job, and you need, need to pat yourself on the back on that one. I want to thank, I wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. Please do hug your family, hug people close to you, because they're not always going to be there. Think of the people that are in California, everything that they have lost just recently. A whole town's gone, and I just can't imagine Mount Clemens just disappearing. So, keep them in mind when you give your thanks. And that's it. I need a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All due to being...
I oppose.